Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. All selectmen are present. We'll start by transmitting a Treasury warrant seventeen, seventeen A, eighteen, eighteen A. The motion?
Move the warrants is read by the chairman.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous? There are no minutes to approve, so we'll go right to our seven o'clock appointment with Scott Durant, Chairman of the Fourth of July Committee, to request the use of the Town Common for tree lighting ceremony on December fourth, two thousand and ten. Unfortunately, Mr. Durant could not make it tonight, but he did send a letter to the Board requesting permit to use the Town Common for annual tree lighting. Dear Mr. Semagley, members of the Board, the Fourth of July Committee is requesting permission to use the Wilmington Town Common on Saturday, December fourth, two thousand and ten, from four to seven P.M. for the town's annual tree lighting celebration. As it has for many years, the committee is organizing and sponsoring the event, which will include free horse-drawn hayride cookies and hot chocolate. We are delighted once again this year to have participation from the Wilmington Methodist Church Choir, clergy members representing various local parishes, and volunteers from the Wilmington Minutemen, and the Wilmington High School Cheerleaders. Additionally, the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce will be sponsoring the appearance by an ice sculptor, as has been in the case for many years in Wilmington, and the Fire Department will be collecting toys for Wilmington children, and residents are encouraged to bring an unwrapped toy to donate. Members of the Board of Directors of the Wilmington Community Fund will also be on hand selling this year's Wilmington tree ornaments for residents to add to their collections. Upon Santa's arrival at six P.M., we will ask he light the lights, the trees on the Town Common, and then join us in the Fourth of July Building for photos with the kids. As always, the committee expresses its gratitude to the Board of Selectmen for its support, and to Mike Kyra and all the town employees whose efforts make this and our summer events possible. I'll entertain a motion or any questions or comments from the board?
I would move to grant permission to the Wilmington Fourth of July Committee for use of the Town Common on Saturday, December fourth, for the annual tree lighting.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous? You'll let Scott?
I will advise Scott.
Yeah, okay. Okay, our seven oh five appointment was Joe Mario Mahoney, President of Women of Wilmington. She wants to introduce the organization to the town and review its mission, including update on current projects.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Actually, I have a handout. I probably should have emailed to you before I handwrite. Thank you.
How are you this evening?
Hmm?
How are you this evening?
I'm doing great. How are you?
Good, thanks.
I just want to first thank you for inviting us to come tonight to tell you a little bit about our new organization. Before I start telling you about us, I just have to give credit to Mr. Kyra, because unbeknownst to him, he's really the reason why we decided to start this group. I met with him over the summertime to talk about some fundraising ideas that we'd been kicking around, and it got to the point where he said, "Well, but who would be sponsoring the fundraiser?" And we realized that as a group, we had this great group of women in Wilmington that were involved in a lot of different organizations, but we were kind of our own rogue group in that we would be doing these things kind of on our own. We'd hear about them through an organization, but then if for some reason that organization couldn't do it, we would step up and do it just as this disorganized organization. So because of that, we decided at the beginning of October, we became official. We call ourselves the Women of Wilmington, which we thought was fantastic, because usually, hopefully, when we tell people about us, we want them to react wow. We've already reached out to other organizations in town to find out how we can start supporting them. And as you can see, kind of for our goals on what we want to be doing, I met with the Community Fund already to see how we can kind of bolster what they're already working on. And we know, according to them, the summertime is really tough for the food pantry, so we're going to commit to doing at least one food drive at the beginning of next summer, if not more, to help try to keep the food pantry fully stocked through the summertime. They also have a backpack program that there's not a lot of awareness of in town, so what we're hoping to do is help support them in collecting their donations, as well as continuing to get donations on our own, so that we can help them provide backpacks and school supplies to any children in need in town. Our main purpose is really to do family-based community service. How we want to distinguish ourselves is we want to be able to find community service activities in the town of Wilmington that we can actually participate with our children in, and help them see what a fantastic town we live in, help them do the food drives with us. Right now, the current project we're really working on is the Holiday Elves Program, and hopefully, I can email you a flyer with more details about that. We're going to be reaching out to local churches, as well as local elderly services in town to put together visiting holiday elves. And what that would be is members of our organization, with their families, would go and visit people, help them do gift wrapping if they needed, help them write Christmas cards, do a craft with them if they just want to have a visit, bring baked goods, just to kind of, you know, spread some holiday cheer. We've also committed to adopting two families through the Community Fund, and we're also, as kind of the Community Fund members were saying when we met with them at their meeting, we're really here to try to reach out to the gray area. There are a lot of families and individuals in Wilmington that, you know, it's such a great town and you want to stay here, but there might just be moments of time that you need a little extra help. And it might not rise to the level of being able to go to the Community Fund to get help from them for different things, or go to other organizations, and we hope that we could be that gray area, that, you know, for a moment that you need a helping hand, we'll be the hand to pull you up and then get you back on your feet. We've done meal plans already. We've only been officially organized since October first, but we have two families right now that we're delivering meals to, just to help them out. One of them has a child who has a serious illness, is in the hospital, so, you know, the very least we can do is help them so they don't have to worry about what they're making for dinner for their other kids still at home. So it's just things like that that we're hoping to continue to do and to grow. We were a little bit nervous that when we put ourselves on Facebook, within the first twenty-four hours, I think we had fifty-two people liking us, and now we're up to over a hundred. We have forty-three members right now, and we're just getting the word out, so we're hoping that by the holiday time that we'll have hit a hundred, a hundred-member mark. We have no membership dues. Our only requirements is that if you choose to be a Woman of Wilmington with us, that you'll do at least two activities with us for that year. In that way, you know, it's for everyone of every, of every financial basis. You don't have to be well off to be helping us. You just have to be willing to give some of your time.
Wow.
I think, yeah, see? I think I covered it, but if you have any questions, definitely.
I'd just say, I think it's great. I know when Selectman Newhouse was the chairman, over the last couple of years, he had an idea of bringing in different organizations in town that do different things, different nonprofits. I think having you here tonight is great. I hope it works out well for you. I think it's a wonderful idea. And I know you personally have been involved with some fundraisers with some families, and not in such a good way, and I appreciate all the work you've done on behalf of all those. Any other questions or any comments from the Board? Yep, right?
I think it's a great, great group and organization that you've put together, especially it's what makes Wilmington so special. It's just people like you that all come together and want to reach out to the people that are in need. But I also like to ask, you do have a website that maybe you could say it so people that are listening tonight could go onto the website if they need help, if they want to, you know, donate time to the organization, maybe it'd be a great idea to announce it.
Thank you for suggesting that. We have the www.womenofwilmington.org, and we're also on Facebook. If you just put in a search, Women of Wilmington, you'll find us, and you can reach out to me or to our Board members through those too. It's info@womanofwilmington.org is the email address that you can use, and we're definitely, like I said, membership is open. We're not in any way, any type of an exclusive organization. If you're willing, then we want you on our, on our membership and get you up and running to help us out. And hopefully, I'll be coming back in the spring to tell you about the great fundraiser that I was hitting Mr. Kyra up about back in August.
I'd like to say simply thank you for taking, taking the reins on this. We always talk about it here in Wilmington. It's our volunteerism and the spirit of that in this town, and exemplified by what you're taking on. May I ask, is this, you said you're sort of an offshoot of, there's the Mothers Club in Wilmington, and there's others, so that those organizations continue to exist?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and we wanted to make sure, that was one of the things, when we first, it was after our meeting in August that we started talking about women of Wilmington. We wanted to make sure that we weren't, we're not here to create any type of competition. So one of the first reach-outs was to the President of the Moms Club, which is Mr. Newhouse's wife, and she immediately not only welcomed the idea, but she's now on our Board as well. And we differentiate ourselves, the Moms Club's a social organization, and they can't be expected. They do fantastic things for the town, but their main goal is to be a social organization for families with young children, and we wouldn't want to keep expecting them to step up, to do fundraising and charitable service, and they do do it, and we don't want to compete with that in any way. So, and I'm also on the Wilmington Educational Foundation, so this isn't, we're not in any way trying to compete. You know, we met with the Community Fund because we wanted to make sure that they understood that we're not there to, we're there to help what they're already doing. We're not there in any way to try to take away from it. You know, we've already committed to the fact that we're not going to make any competitive fundraising attempts. We don't want to take anything away from the existing organizations. We're just here to help supplement if there's a need. And that was, the Community Fund, one of the, one of the things we talked about at the meeting, that we're now actually, if you see it on Facebook, and I can give that plug too, is we're trying to sell all the holiday ornaments. They have these fantastic holiday ornaments that, for some reason, once the year passes, no one thinks to buy, and, you know, we, and the Moms Club and some of the mothers were talking about it, and wouldn't it be great to have the year that your child was born, or the year that you moved into town? So we've been really trying to pitch getting some of those ornaments moving again, so that it's not just at the tree lighting and at some local businesses, but we can really help. So that was one of our first projects as well. So we definitely, you know, as I said to the Community Fund, we're here with open minds and open hearts. We definitely don't have all the answers, and we don't want to be taking away from organizations that have been around for a long time. We want to be here to help those organizations, as well as help individuals and families who might not have any other way of getting help right now.
Thank you.
I'd just echo my colleagues, however, this shows Wilmington at its best in volunteerism getting stronger and stronger in this community, and it means a lot. And I take my hat off to the Women of the Town and Women of the World, because you had a good man as a good woman, let me tell you. So I think we are going to-
Hopefully so. My husband's birthday, so hopefully he heard that one.
Yeah. We know when we're in our place, and once again, it means a lot, and I think it's great, you know, and thank you.
Great. Well, thank you again for having us, and like I said, you know, we'll definitely keep you informed of what we're working on in the town. And thank you for having such a great, I mean, we're not, we don't do this because it makes, it does make us feel good, but it's because we have such a wonderful town, and we want to make sure it continues moving in that direction in these hard times. We want, and we get overwhelmed with people who don't have much, who are still trying to help so much, and we want to just help support that.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Our seven twenty appointment is with Chief Ed Bradbury, the Fire Chief, and Richard McClellan, the Lieutenant, Wilmington Fire Department, for the acquisition of the new aerial ladder truck. I hear they have a little slideshow they're going to show us.
We do. We'll show it to all for you.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Speak loud.
I'll speak loud. First of all, I'd like to just acknowledge the support of the Board, Mr. Kyra, the Finance Committee-
And the voters that saw fit to approve the money for this vehicle, which we took delivery of on Friday, and this is a picture from Friday, so it was a bit moist, but we got through it. We went from inception, actually, we went to a pre-build.
Can, can-
Where'd you like?
Can we just get it so the cable can-
That's it.
Is that okay? Do you mind doing it from there? But now we're going to need-
My back, probably?
No, no, no. We need to make sure you get a mic, Jim.
I'm not made for TV.
Thank you.
Okay? Excuse my back. Anyway.
Sorry.
All right, Wallace. What we, what we've done here is actually, we've really taken a huge step. I've been around a little longer than I like to admit, but the first ladder truck that we actually bought in town was in nineteen fifty-nine, with a steel aerial that was about seventy-five feet long. We were amazed when we got the truck we're presently replacing in nineteen eighty-six. If you could put this thing out, zero degrees, and you could put a guy in the end of it. That was just amazing. What we've done now, we've come to the point where we have a piece of apparatus that has really enhanced our capability. And for us that have been around here, we've seen what this town has done in twenty-five years or so. This helps meet those needs, and it allows us to be more efficient and safe in doing what we have to do. The biggest thing, and I don't know if at this point it'll show up on TV, but you'll notice on the front here, this is, this piece of apparatus we call an aerial taller. It's a conventional aerial ladder, which you'll see in some of the subsequent slides, but at the end of it, it's got this, for better term, a basket with two hinged doors, and it's got what looks like a lot of paraphernalia on it. One of the bigger things that it has is this master stream or deck gun that we can shoot about twelve-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute with. In the older-style trucks with the straight tip, we would have to run a hose up the ladder. It had to be scrapped off. It'd have to attach the device to the end of the ladder, and then either put a guy up there or just have this thing. You could either, really limited mobility and limited visibility. This here, and I'll show you as we go along in subsequent slides, has the ability, that is remote-controlled. That gun will swivel a hundred-and-eighty degrees this way, and vertically, it'll shoot down. That's a full range of down and up about the same. So you, with the combination of moving the aerial and having that, we could put master streams into play in a matter of minutes, under five minutes, where it would take us sometimes in excess of fifteen minutes or so to set this other device up. So that's one of the major things that you see, and that's, that's what's going to look so different to you. It also allows us, we have discharge outlets on the bucket, so if we're in a situation where we need to get a hose line to a roof, to a third floor, or something like that, we can put the people in this bucket and advance the line from the bucket rather than up through the stairwells, which is hugely time-consuming and labor-intensive. So those are some of the, some of the differences that you see from the front. From the side, I have my audiovisual guy here, Rick McClellan, who's told me that this is going to work every single time. Let me go back. Thanks. From the side here, you see what we've got is, another thing we've done here is we've pretty much doubled our capability to be able to provide lighting at the scene, and lighting at a scene and implement weather a night like tonight is really crucial for safety and for our efficiency. So on the bucket itself, we have these five-hundred-watt quartz lights. There's one on the bottom, two on the sides, and one on the front, and then there are two on either side of the vehicle. And it's all run by a ten-thousand-watt hydraulic generator. So what we've done is we've eliminated the whole auxiliary diesel motor on this thing, and it runs sort of like an excavator would run it. It takes its power off a hydraulic pump that turns the generators, so another big improvement. The orange, that is what we call a Stokes Basket. It's for rescuing people, securing them, and then lowering to the ground. So if we have somebody on a roof or a high-angle situation, we have the ability to take this basket and attach it, to stretch it to the basket, and then lower it to the ground, whereas previously, we would have to slide it down the ladder. And you'll see in slides coming up that this will actually allow us, when it comes out of the bed, we can actually put that bucket on the ground to either facilitate loading or unloading. So a huge, huge improvement over where we were. Also, you notice there's a lot more storage on this vehicle. We're going to have a real enhanced rescue capability, vehicle rescue, confined space rescue to a point, high-angle rescue, and some trench rescue ability. It carries lots of hand tools that you might find in your garden shed, you know, sledgehammers, shovels, picks, and all those sort of things that we may need in any given situation. Here we go, Rick. This is the rear, and one of the big things you probably noticed is this chevron material. This is all NFPA-required. Now, it's all reflective. There's been a real rash of accidents that continue to happen over the years, where people just run into the back of emergency vehicles, so they hopefully, this is something that's going to deter that. You would think with all the lights on the back, but that would not happen, but it still continues to happen. This is the, this is where the water attaches, for the waterway that runs up the base of this ladder to the very tip that we showed you earlier. Now, this whole system here, just for the, for the people to get up and down, for the firefighters to get up and down, it's more of a stairway than a, than a little ladder that they're climbing up. And again, the compartmentation. You'll notice also the jacks on this vehicle that's stabilized, pretty low-profile. This is a design that's unique to this manufacturer, and it's worked out well. It's the same manufacturer that manufactured the truck before us. This is the same vehicle before, it was lettered down in Florida for its, one of its acceptance tests. Same thing, it's pretty redundant when you look at it, but one of the bigger things, as you look at the front of it, is that this is a four-door cab. The truck we're replacing has room for two firefighters in the front, and then the other two are basically, not out in the weather like we used to be, but they're sitting in an open, unenclosed, unrestrained, unconditioned. There's no heat or A.C. out there, so you stuck these guys out there, and it wasn't a good scene. So now that we've, we've done this, this is, they're all fully enclosed in the cab. This tank right here is for breathing air. This is piped up to this area, and there are outlets up there, so that the firefighters in the basket don't necessarily have to have a SCOTPAC on, but they can be on breathing air. And that's just another small enhancement that we have. It's just some of the compartmentation. Also attached to this generator, not only the quartz lights, but on either side, we have a two-hundred-foot reel of cords, so we can run any of our electrical tools that are not cordless, or any other equipment we might need to run. So that, that's also, rather than, we came from the days of recoil of things on the ground. That's been a, these here, these are storage for breathing air bottles. This is a little innovation Lieutenant McClellan came up with. This is a backup blade. There's an angle towards the rear, so when this thing goes into reverse, the whole back lights up, the sides light up. We have a closed-circuit camera on the rear, and also on the right side of the vehicle, so the driver can see the right side. The technology is pretty amazing. When you put the right directional on, that camera comes on, and you get a view of the right side of your truck as you're taking the, taking the turn. Tandem axle, as opposed to single axle that the old truck was. This truck weighs in around seventy-seven thousand pounds. Pretty substantial. Again, just some more of the compartmentation and the jacking system. And as it, as it comes out of the bed, this ladder, as the previous one, is in all aluminum construction. And as you'll see, as we get further along, this thing is almost like walking on a stairway. It's about thirty-three inches that the rails come up on the sides. It's a pretty, it's pretty nice if you've got to move people that aren't familiar with that sort of thing down it. These are some of the tools mounted on, these boards slide in and out. These are some of the hand tools we talked about. A lot of specialized hand tools that are unique to the fire service. And again, this is a compartment right up behind the cab, and this is what we call transverse compartment. It goes right through. We'll be keeping backboards in there and other equipment that we can access from both sides. It's got some length to it. We've had, this is still early in the process, but what we've got here, this is a, a new rescue tool that we've purchased. The common-term Hearst tool, it isn't the Hearst brand, but it's actually replacing something that I think was nineteen eighty-four. So we've done really well. This is a rescue saw. This is, would have a big blade on it for cutting concrete, masonry, wood, steel, anything like that. And again, some more of the compartmentation. Another one of the cord reels. This is a view standing at the rear of the truck as the ladder and everything comes out of the bed. This is just to give you an idea of some of the space we have up top here, for storing things we don't really need to get to right away. And this is that hydraulic generator right there. And you can see there's kind of a trough in the roof. That's the roof of the vehicle for this pipe that runs up there that allows us to move the water up, pre-pipe. This is the console at the base of the ladder, where you can operate this. This is another thing that's hugely unique to this vehicle, is you can operate it from the base or from inside the bucket. So as far as visibility, we used to rely on, you had the operator kind of looking around the ladder, and you had limited lighting coming up the side trying to place his ladder. So now, if you put people in the bucket, they can actually bring themselves right where they need to be. They know how close they are to the windowsill, to the roof, to the eve, or wherever they need to be. So this screen, oh, pardon. Never was into the audiovisual thing all that much. Are we still in the base, Rick? No, uh-oh, this thing's gone crazy. This town show going crazy. Going back up one more. I'll go here. This is the, this is also, this is the control module that's up in the bucket, essentially identical to the one down below, and these levers operate the extension, elevation, and rotation. These screens are going to give you anything from what your extension angle is, what your overall length of the ladder is at the time, the tip at the temperature, temperature at the tip, if you're operating in a zone that's hot. These are controls for the, for the deck gun, for the ladder pipe. This just gives you an idea of, this is coming off the rear of the vehicle. It's probably only extended about fifty-five to sixty feet, and you can put it right on the ground. So if you're loading people, unloading people, right through these, there's a door on either side, which gives a little bit of a close-up of this bucket, if you will. And there's, there's that gun, and we actually have two places where we can attach hose lines up there. This is a view, I don't know if that was, Rick, was that fully extended?
Yes.
It was. This is a view from about a hundred feet up in the bucket, looking down. It's probably about a seventy-degree angle. And you can see the sides and the substantial rungs there that really provide a real degree of safety. Amazing how stable this thing is. And this is, on the day of delivery, just to give you an idea of what it looks like in our backyard, all letted up. And really hard to pick out, but that, that waterway runs right up under here and around the bucket. And again, that's only a partial extension. They still owned it at the time, so I think they're being kind of careful with it. We haven't given them the check yet. And we're back to the beginning. If you had any questions, just I'd like to give you a kind of a brief overview of what it is. I think as we move forward, and as the town grows, it's just going to be, it's going to enhance the safety aspect of the whole thing, and our efficiency, so. And again, I thank you.
Can you say it?
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. I think a lot of times, people take firefighters for granted, police for granted, what they do, and we ask you to do a lot. Hopefully, you never have to go into a situation where you'll need all the bells and whistles on that, but if you do, I think it's, it's the least we can do as a town to give you the equipment that you guys need to do your job. And I congratulate you for getting this new unbelievable piece of equipment, and thank you for your presentation tonight. I'm sure the Board's got a few comments or questions.
Simply quick question. Does it fit in the garage?
It fits. It's about, it's just under twelve feet tall, about forty-seven feet long. We sweated it when it, no, we didn't. It was good.
But we get no pull here at all? You can't send that baby down here? We could actually take a good look at it?
Well, I think that once we, right now, it's, we just took delivery. It's just got registered today, but once we get the guys up to speed, training is starting this week, we certainly would love to bring it down.
But seriously, I think that's going to be an asset to the community, because, you know, Wilmington is growing. We have a nice, big industrial park, and we have a lot of residents, and, you know, you guys in the police department, all-town employees do an outstanding job, and we try to equip everybody, as the Chairman stated, with the best equipment every year at the town meeting, and this is an absolute, you know, joy for the community, and it's, you look at it as a monster, but it's a lifesaver. And I'm really glad to see that we had it, and I supported it, and under your helm, I know it's going to be an asset to this town, and also the manager and everybody who works to push this thing at town meeting. It's, it's a great thing for this community. Thank you.
I think it's just another example of, as everyone always says, in this economy, what we've been able to do here in Wilmington, to be able to take delivery on a piece of fire apparatus like that. And not only this apparatus, we also have a new ambulance that'll be delivered in about four weeks, so. And I really would be remiss if I didn't recognize Lieutenant McClellan, who did a lion's share of the work here in getting this thing specked and equipped, so that it's going to be the piece of equipment that's going to be usable and put together like it, like it should be. So again, I'm just, I'm just the window dressing.
You touched a couple of times on a question that I had. I know that anytime, I think this is a fantastic step for the town, and all behind it, but anytime there's change, it's, it can be difficult.
it should be. So again, I'm just the window dressing.
You touched a couple of times on a question that I had. I know that anytime, I think this is a fantastic step for the town and all behind it, but anytime there's change, it can be difficult. I know in my business, if you change the computer to the photocopier to my cellphone, pulling out what I have left for a few days and then you get used to it. From a programmatic standpoint, how do you get your people up to speed in terms of using it and being comfortable so that, you know, the first time you do need some of this new equipment in a pinch, that's going to be used well? How do you do that?
It's not easy. It's one of the... This is one of the first times we've received a piece of apparatus like this that is so complex, that has so much utility. So what we've done is we've identified, I had asked the shift office to identify people on their group that they felt were going to be a good fit for this, meaning that they showed some initiative and they were able to, you know, think on their feet and have some experience in either heavy equipment or trucks. So we started with that, identified those folks, and then we have onsite training with the factory or the manufacturer. And then it's going to be a good four weeks or so of these guys every day that they're on duty. They've got this thing out, they're setting it up, they're bringing it in town, just seeing where it fits, where it doesn't fit. It'll probably run on a lot of the medical aids and things like, just to get it running and get these guys familiar with it and get it going. Everyone in the department will have an awareness level. They'll know all the equipment on it, where it is, how to operate it, and they'll know how this operates. Everybody's going to participate in the training. But we've identified these eight key people right now in order to make this transition, which is not an easy transition in a department that's basically, we've had about a 30% turnover in the last three years along with, you know, things like this. So we're moving slowly. We're going to make sure everybody's comfortable. We have plenty of time with the old one before we have to give that, you know, either on a trade-in or whatever we do with it. So that's where we're headed with that.
Thanks. Chief, again, like my colleague said, that this is a great asset to the town, but not only that, I think you, and being relatively in town as much as I have, as you said you have, that as the town grows, and no doubt we're hoping eventually to have a hotel in this town. And with that, I think, you know, having this now, not only taking, you know, the value of the economy the way it is, getting the deal that we did on it, which is a great asset, not only to your department, but to the town manager and to the Board of Selectmen, you know, for bringing it through at this time of the way things are with the economy. But I think it's going to be that much greater for us to attract a hotel because now, not only we have a professional fire department with all the personnel, but like you said, we have a new ambulance, we got a new hook and ladder truck, the other equipment you guys do outstanding job keeping it up. So I think this is going to bring in more industry to the town when right now we need it.
Yeah, well said. I, speaking as a resident, I'll just simply say, I hope we never have to use the thing, but I like knowing we got it. It's funny, we were remarking a few moments ago about how large it is, does it fit in the garage? I actually noticed, I guess I was expecting it to look larger. And I guess my mind is thinking back to when I was a kid and a ladder truck had the big steering wheel in the back and you had to go around the big corners. And I guess I'm surprised you can pack that much technology in that big of a ladder on really kind of a compact vehicle.
It is big when you stand next to it, but you're right. For what this thing can do and the technology that's come along in the last 25 years since we bought the last one, it's actually, it is incredible. It really is. And I hope I'm around in 25 years to see what they come up with next.
And they retire this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just want to mention that, the press is here and I'm sure that'd be one of their questions. The price for the ladder truck was $847,000 and then there was about $60,000 or so worth of equipment on the truck. Interestingly enough, when the chief and I first looked at this two or three years ago, we were looking at prices in excess of $1.1 million. And then we went out to bid and sharpen the pencils and despite the sharpened pencils, you have a state-of-the-art machine. I mean, it's got everything that this town could hope for at a pretty decent price, given today's market. So that's an additional benefit, fiscal benefit, I think, in addition to the obvious benefit for the public safety of the residents and the businesses and others who cross through Wilmington as well, and particularly as well for the safety of the firefighters that has been mentioned because certainly the truck that we had, it did its job for many years, but it's tired and is being farmed out. And to that end, if anybody wants, is interested, they have until November 17th to put in that bid. The minimum bid is $10,000. Otherwise, that's the amount of money that we can get in a trade that will lower the price that much more.
Just one interesting thing that I kind of left out that kind of really highlights what this is. I mean, the old truck that we're replacing right now, you can put one person, 250 pounds on the tip of it. That's it. That's the tip load. This will do almost 1,400, take four people in that bucket. So that's how far this has come, just with the structural engineering and that sort of thing, so. And I went to the top of this one because I was in the bucket. I wouldn't climb to the top.
All right. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Lieutenant, thank you.
If you want to just close that up and then you can pick it up tomorrow if you want or however you want to do it. We can, yeah, we'll secure it off, I...
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Communications.
Mr. Chairman, you have a memorandum from me regarding the latest in the MTB Products Liability Litigation advising you that the town is in receipt. The settlement checked for the net proceeds in accordance with your prior approval of the settlement made with Getty Properties Corporation. The total net proceed made payable to the town for deposit to the water and sewer department count is $3,894.94. This amount is in addition to the previously reported payments and accrued interest of $947,280.72, which resulted from the town's prior settlements with other defendants involved in the above referenced litigation. The total amount of settlement proceeds received by the town, including interest, is $951,175.66. And to refresh your memories, the town is among 80 Massachusetts public water providers and hundreds of others nationwide who participated in this particular class action lawsuit. We have a public hearing notice regarding the discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification that we bring forward as a legal notice. It's already been advertised, the purpose of which is to give proper notice that the town will be discussing a local property tax policy at a public hearing that provides an open forum regarding classification for fiscal year 2011 taxation purposes. And that hearing will be held at the Town Hall in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Monday, November 22nd, 2010, and it's scheduled for 7:15 P.M. Interested taxpayers may present their views on classification policy at the hearing or in writing to my office until 4:30 P.M. on that date, and that information will all be provided to the members of the Board of Selectmen. The board is being asked to consider the December 2010 and January 2011 meeting schedule. We have typically been meeting, one meeting in December and not meeting around Christmas time, although we have done that. And last year, we just met the once in December and once in January. And then there were three meetings in February. One was because that was when the town meeting budget hearing was held. This year, if you want to have the two meetings in December, they would be scheduled for December 13th and December 27th. We have not done that for the last several years with the exception of 2008, and that was because there was a public hearing on the mobile-on-the-run license, and that was a specific meeting for that purpose. Also, for the last two years, we have had the one meeting in January, the first meeting, which in this case would be scheduled for January 10th. And instead of having the January 24th meeting, we went directly to the budget meeting, which in this case would be January 31st. So there would still be two meetings in January, except it would not be the second and fourth. It would be the second and fifth, if that's what the board is inclined to do. And I would recommend certainly we would have both meetings in February, which would be the 14th and the 28th. So it's certainly up to the board as to how they wish to proceed. The December 13th meeting is critical because that's the license renewal meeting. But again, we have not been meeting around Christmas time for the past several years with the exception of the special hearing that was held in 2008.
Any comments from the board?
If we were to meet on the 13th or the 20th, I guess, but either one of those dates, if we were to meet and then something came up that needed to be addressed, we'd still have the, kind of, the 27th to deal with it before the end of the calendar year if need be. So my take on it is stick with the one meeting, but we, you know, the chairman needs a call meeting, he'll do it.
I was kind of thinking the same thing, but the 13th will give us the two more Mondays if something did come up.
Right. I would recommend the 13th because that's a scheduled date for all of those hearings and for all of the renewals. Yeah, so that really would be critical to stay with that. And that's the regular scheduled meeting for the board.
What did you recommend for January? I was...
If the board wishes to have, the board, I would suspect, wants the two meetings in January, I'm suggesting that they could be January 10th and January 31st. Because the January 31st is the date of the budget presentation. Certainly, if the board wants a third meeting, they could do that on the 24th as well, but that's up to the board. I think if you wanted to be consistent with last year, last year, December, January, and February, there were a total of five meetings. That would still be the same case for December, January, and February this year if you follow this, pretty much the same schedule.
Okay.
To Mr. Newhouse's point, I'm of the mind that the 10th and 31st would be sufficient unless between now and, you know, sometime in December, it becomes apparent that there's new business or additional business that needs to be handled and we need to schedule an ad hoc meeting.
Yeah, I'll go with the 13th and the 10th and 31st.
Hi, take it with you.
That's fine.
Sounds good.
So we'll just schedule it in that way and go forward. And if there's some other needs, you'll let me know and I'll talk with you and we'll do it.
Okay.
All right. That concludes the regular business before the board. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Public comments.
I got a question through you, the town manager, Kyra. I just want to know, just because the high school studies come out and is public, are we going to have some type of forum between the community, with the community, before it strikes town meeting for it, if it does?
Oh, sure. There'll be, yeah, there'll be several meetings. I can tell you right now where this is at. There's already been several public school building committee meetings, which I might add, no one from the public has attended except members of the school building committee. The first task of the committee, if I may, Mr. Chairman, was to select a project manager, an owner's project manager. The school building committee recommended that I contract with Jocelyn Lesser and Associates, Inc., out of Watertown. You may remember that they were the firm that served as project manager before project management was a requirement for the town's public safety building and middle school. And so we have entered into, we negotiated and entered into a preliminary contract. It's preliminary because it requires the approval of the MSBA. We expect that the MSBA will approve the selection of project manager by early December. Nevertheless, we're still moving forward and working with the committee to move towards the designer selection phase. But the next step is to get an approval from the MSBA, and I fully expect that that will happen. The goal at this point is for the feasibility study, including schematics, to be finished in time that would enable us to go to a fall town meeting in 2011. My hope would be that by sometime by September of 2011, that work would have been done. Between now and then, there will be several meetings, the public. As soon as we get approval from the MSBA, we will ask the project manager to explain the whole process to the Board of Selectmen and have them come into a Board of Selectmen meeting. The school building committee meetings will all be public. In addition to that, we will have several forums, just as we did with the middle school project, where the public would be invited to comment and make input. So that's all going to be very public, very transparent.
More or less shooting for a special town meeting in the fall of 2011, just prior, you know, without having it put on the floor in April's meeting.
I don't believe we'd be ready in time for April. The process, once you hire a designer, and you have to, again, you go through a very rigid and rigorous process because the MSBA is very invested in this, because they're going to be paying for 50% of the cost. So under that, under the new regulations with the MSBA, they stay very involved and you have to meet various schedules, but you also have to be cognizant of their scheduling and they only meet as a board every so often. So we'll be working with them. And it's, you know, it's my hope that perhaps early in 2011, we would have completed a design and selection process and put an architect and design firm on board to, you know, conduct the feasibility study and to come up with an ultimate recommendation for the town. That takes a good eight or nine, 10 months of work, and that's why we're shooting for the fall of 2011.
Well, you just answered quite a few of my questions. So there would be one ultimate design, there wouldn't be option A, B, or C, like the study would point to.
The ultimate study would point to one design, but we would be looking at various options during that process and we would certainly...
With the public's input.
With the public's input.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, you know, I get a lot of people, when I'm having coffee in the morning, coming up to me going, "Do you know about this? There's no meeting I know of right now. I'll get you the information." I just want to get out to the public so we don't have the same, as I say, a lot of it, the elderly people I talk with throughout the community say to me, "We just don't want it to be like the library debate. We just don't want to be long-winded and a big fight. We want to make sure that the kids in the community are getting the best."
You're certainly welcome to refer any of those people to the superintendent of schools who chairs the school building committee or to myself, and we can certainly provide them with the information.
I just want to make sure, you know, some of the elderly people that don't know the avenues, that are probably vehemently against having a new school for someone.
I don't think so. I don't think they're...
Well, there's a good small percentage of them, but just to make them at ease and tell them this is going to be the process, just to help them along and contact you. Thank you.
New business committee reports.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to use this opportunity as a, much of a public announcement, I guess, of sorts. I had a family contact me relative to some problems they were having with a particular bank, felt as though they were getting treated in kind of a bait-and-switch style with the loan modification. And I know a lot of that stuff is out there with mortgage modifications and people having their troubles. And I'd contacted a representative from the Attorney General's Office to ask some questions. And certainly, one of the things that he recommended was let the general public know that the Attorney General's Office has a specific department and team of people that deals with this kind of thing and that I was welcome to publicize...
I have no report. Okay. I would just like to mention, last Saturday, at a prior board of selectmen meeting, they voted unanimously to make Saturday, November 6th, Patrice Esmondozade here in Wilmington. And last Saturday, November 6th, at the WCTV studios, I met with Patrice and her mother and her brother, and they did a nice interview on WCTV in conjunction with the town crier. And I was able to present her the proclamation, telling everybody that November 6th was Patrice Mendoza Day. And it was an amazing experience for me, and she's an unbelievably talented young lady. And just so you know, she was a Wilmington High School graduate, went to UMass Lowell, and excelled at field hockey, and she was the Female Athlete of the Year, All-American, New England Ten goalkeeper. She's living out in Arizona right now, but she made it on time, she made it back to have this presentation, and she had an alumni game Saturday, and they're going to watch another game, a UMass Lowell game, and then all her Hall of Fame induction ceremony. So, I'm sure the family had a full day. We received a beautiful letter, the board's got a copy, from Paz Mendoza, her mother, just thanking us for making such a special day for her daughter. And at the interview on Saturday, I think Paz made a point that she loves Wilmington, and she, and we know that she does because she volunteers for the senior center, the voting office. She does all kinds of good stuff in town. So, congratulations to Patrice, and I hope you had a wonderful day. Thank you.
One date?
One date.
The curbside collection of yard waste continues through December 3rd on your regular trash pickup day. November 10th is the next day for brush drop-off at Old Main Street, at the Old Main Street Recycling Center, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then again, on November 13th, on Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then the same the following Wednesday and Saturday, the 17th and the 20th. A reminder to all that November 11th, of course, is Veterans Day, and the town, as usual, will have, I'm sure, a very well-attended Veterans Day ceremony at the Town Common. Town offices will be closed, but we encourage all the residents to attend the Veterans Day ceremonies, which will commence at 11 o'clock at the Town Common. On November 15th, that's a week from tonight, on Monday, is the Olin Public Information Meeting that is coordinated by the town in conjunction with the EPA, who has oversight of the Superfund site on Eames Street. It'll be at the middle school auditorium at 7:00 p.m. Representatives from EPA, DEP, and the town, including the town's environmental consultant, and the town council's office will attend. Also, representatives from the community group work will also be in attendance, and everybody is welcome to go to that meeting, 7 o'clock at the auditorium at the middle school. A reminder that the senior citizens will be holding their holiday craft fair at the Buzell Senior Center on Saturday, November 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And again, the next meeting of the board of selectmen on the 22nd will include a discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification for fiscal year 2011.
Thank you. To entertain a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing real property issues...
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, if someone mentioned WCTV, I was going to mention something earlier if I could, just interject for a second. Maybe at an upcoming selectmen's meeting, and I know they volunteer and do a lot of good work, WCTV, maybe the director or the board, come before the board, talk to us about programming, talk to us about the access fee and what direction they're going in. I'd like to have a discussion on that. I'd be happy to talk to you another time about specifics.
Yeah, Sandra Currie's the new director over there. Sure.
No, we can. All right. And I'm sorry to interrupt, but I forgot that when you mentioned WCTV, it rang a bell.
WCTV are always our friends, right?
And to, I will send that invitation to just discuss in general the programming and...
Programming and the access fee, you know, the money that is being brought in.
With the money.
Yeah, because I know a lot of folks volunteer, and just like to, and I'd be more than happy to talk with some other items, obviously. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
No problem. Now, we'll entertain a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing real property issues, not to return to open session. So, move.
Second man.
Motion made in a second. We get a voice vote?
Yes.
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 Unanimous. Thank you.